I'm not sure about Mr. Lang.
Okay, thank you very much. I'd like to call and order our meeting tonight. This is the Seline City Planning Commission. We'll begin tonight with approval of our minutes from our last meeting. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
It's been moved.
Second.
To approve the minutes is read. All those in favor, aye please?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Bringing us to new business. Tonight we have a continuation from our last meeting. This is application PDD 18-22A filed by Jim Raven Camp.
I can run and get it.
Requesting zoning district classification change from R1 to PDD on property described as the north half of Lot 8, Block 11 of South Park Edition, known as 622 South 9th Street. Is the applicant here?
It does not look like the applicant is here.
It's noted that the applicant or their representative must be present for us to take action on an item.
Yes. So, we did speak with the applicant, and he believes that the sale that we were expecting and the reason that this particular application has been continued and postponed from our December 18th meeting is that he believes the sale still could potentially take place that would effectively make this particular case, this rezoning case, unnecessary because the prospective buyer is planning to redevelop the property or renovate it as a single-family unit. And so, to go through a brief history of where we are, this particular property, which is the yellow, lapsed building, two-story structure that you see in the photograph, is 622 South 9th, and in January of 2017 was fire damaged significantly to the point where the grandfathered pre-existing non-conforming status as a four-unit apartment essentially ended. And the property is zoned R1, single-family, and so that's the only use that is allowed according to the existing zoning district. And so, the applicant, in an effort to avoid tearing it down, which is what he currently is obligated to do if he does not redevelop it, he is looking to try to find somebody who is willing to renovate it and bring it up to a acceptable standard because it is on the demolition list right now to be demolished. And the applicant still believes that the sale of it could potentially happen and was unable to come today and again would like to postpone action. However, we do have some of the neighbors who were here last time, that neighbor to the property of the south that do want to speak. And staff does have an update on some of the conversation that took place at the last meeting. There is a shared driveway, and there is also a shared sanitary sewer line that is shared. And the reason for that is, at one point in time, the owner of both of these properties owned both these properties. And so, in order to evidently what it appears like, save money, they created one driveway rather than two and one sewer line tap instead of two. But there's never been an agreement for either the driveway or for the sanitary sewer line that's been created and recorded. And so, that's something that will need to be noted. And if this does eventually go forward with the rezoning and it doesn't get, the application doesn't get withdrawn, that will be a condition of approval that we would suggest is that that agreement actually take place. And really, regardless of what happens in this, with this hearing, that should happen. So, but that's the history that we were able to find. That's the research that Ms. Andrew was able to do, is that there is a single driveway, there is a single sanitary sewer line, but there's never been a shared agreement for either of those. So, with that, we would suggest that the application be postponed further to the February 5th meeting, I believe is the next one, and that staff would stand for any questions, and we would like to hear from people in the audience.
Thank you, Mr. Hirsch. Welcome back. How are you?
Good.
Do you have information you'd like to share with us again? If you would approach to the microphone, please. And I just need your name again and your address. Thank you.
My name's Marilyn Armenta, and I'm, the property right to the south of that, which is 628 South 9th. That was in the picture. That's our house. There has been, I was under the assumption that the sale has been finalized, but there has been a big trash dumpster brought in that's parked in behind the house at 622. And there has been some people in there working, and they've been there, they've worked about a week and a half. And according to, I was outside one day, and according to them, they've got the whole upstairs gutted. And supposedly, they gave me, they told me a name of who's prospectively going to buy it. And she has hired them to go in there and start demolition and to, so that she can fix it back up and fix it as a single dwelling house. But there's, nobody been there for about two weeks now. So, I don't know if that's the reason it's been halted as far as the cleanup. And we thought, hopefully, we had our fingers crossed that there was somebody there going to take it and get it cleaned up and restored.
Well, my understanding from staff is that it is still under the ownership of Mr. Raven Camp.
So, what we were told was that there was a firm closing on the property that was scheduled for January 9th, which was last week. And the closing was to occur at Land Title Services. The closing did not occur. The prospective buyer did not appear at the closing or produce the funds necessary to complete the purchase of the property. The closing did not occur, and there is not a future scheduled date. So, Mr. Raven Camp's of the belief that the sale is still going to occur. If I could ask the neighbor, do you have, as a neighbor, a preference? Would you rather see the home fixed up and returned to a dwelling as it is, or the property be demolished?
I would just as soon see the property redeveloped or fixed back up and to stay there as long as that's what they do. And, but I would like for it to be fixed up as a single dwelling.
And that is the, that would be the stipulation, even if it would be demolished, correct?
Yes.
That it would be rebuilt as a single family.
So, as Dustin.
Well, even to restore it as it is now. If they go in and restore it, and restore it to a single dwelling household, then that would not be a problem for us.
Even if it was to be demolished and resold, it would have to be a single-family dwelling.
If the property were torn down and nothing happened, the only thing that could be built back there would be another single-family residence. The, you have this as an attachment to the application in your packet, and it's probably the best explanation for why you're all here this afternoon. But in submitting this application, Mr. Raven Camp has taken the position that the property is in too good a condition to be condemned and torn down. And he has had many parties interested in purchasing the property, but he informs us and the commission that those parties back off when he conveys to them that it has to be repaired and reconstructed as a single-family residence. The property is already set up for apartments with individual kitchens and baths, which it does not make sense to spend money to rebuild it as a single-family home. The cost would be greater than the return on the investment. So, that is essentially the nuts and bolts of the zoning request is that the property was historically used for multifamily apartments. They're grandfathered. The fire that occurred exceeded 50% of the appraised value of the property. That means the grandfathering has ceased, and it can only be used as a single-family dwelling at the present time. And that's the reason for the request today.
So, before we have that discussion, did you, so, thank you for the update on progress there. Did you have other questions?
No, I didn't know if I could.
Mr. Hirsch brought up the situation of the sewer line and driveway agreements, and that's nothing that's been done since we saw you last?
No.
Okay.
No, nothing's been.
What staff did is we went to the register of deeds. I can't, I think what, I did what I would consider to be a 90% thorough research and maybe not absolutely turned over every pebble. But I went back to the time when the homes were built. The property, the north half and the south half was owned by the same builder, and appears that the same builder built both homes, owned both lots at the time. Since he owned both lots, it was less expensive and more convenient to do a single drive and a single sewer line since he owned both lots. And then, what sometimes occurs in the best situation is when you have two property owners that live side by side that share a driveway, that there is oftentimes what we call a shared driveway agreement that spells out the rights and responsibilities of the two parties that share the single access, share repairs, agree not to put up fences or barricades or block the use of the other, that type of thing. And so, what we agreed to do for the Armentas is to see if there was something in place that maybe had been overlooked, but we could not find that there was any record that that had been done in this case where there was a written agreement between 622 and 628 that addressed how those things take place. So, what often happens in staff's experience is there is some crisis or there's a plumbing crisis, and the party that is most affected goes to the party next door and say, "We're sharing this, so we want you to pay half of the cost to get this unplugged or to fix the problem," and, or, "We want you to pay two-thirds," or whatever it is. And so, it's always best if there is a signed agreement in place that's recorded in the deeds office and runs with the land. So, that way, when somebody buys the property in the future, there's something in place. It also puts a buyer on notice that there is shared facilities. So, we think that needs to happen if Mr. Raven Camp's project moves forward. I don't know if that would address all your concerns, but if it was a single-family residence and we had some stipulations in writing about how the sewer and driveway were going to be addressed, would that make you feel better?
That would make us feel better because then it's more equal, our usage to their usage. And yes, if there's a problem, then it needs to be shared. But as it was before, there was two people in the front apartment, three people in the back apartment, four or five people in the ground floor apartment, all using that same line. And then, when something went wrong, then it was, "We need to pay half of it too, and there's only two of us." So, the usage was far more greater on that side of the plumbing than it was on our side of the plumbing, and we shouldn't have to pay for their usage. But if it's a single dwelling house, then, then it's more comfortable.
Half and half is fair. Yes.
So, did you have to pay for half of that sewer repair?
Mm-hmm. But yet, was it last year? Last year, we had an issue with the plumbing that went into that same line, but there wasn't anybody in their household because it's been burnt since January of 2017.
Yeah, we won't let anybody occupy it, so.
So, we had a problem, and so, we had to foot the whole bill. Whereas, whereas, we had nobody to help us, you know, with the shared. But, you know, we don't know, the problem could have been something ongoing and then finally came to a head. Or maybe it was just something that initially happened. But Raven Camp wasn't there to help us, so.
Thank you very much.
Was there anything else?
Did you want to say anything, Mr. Armenta?
Tell them your name.
I'm Mario Armenta, and I live in 628 South 2.
Thank you.
My question is that if in the future, whatever they do with the house, if making apartments or house, if we have some problems with the problems we have been before, can we, so we can live in peace, can we put a fence in our line?
Well, you're veering into lots of different topics and subjects, none of which we actually handle here tonight. But yes, you can put a fence on your property line. You'd need to talk to the development department. They can give you specifics about how to do that. There's pamphlets available. You can go online and look. However, there are setback requirements. There are requirements as to the height of the fence. If you're talking about putting them between the middle of the driveway?
Yes.
Obviously, that's going to be discouraged, and you're going to need to work specifically with the development department before you do anything like that. You would have to go through the process with them. I have been involved in Seline. I sell real estate. I have a real estate company. And I have been involved in situations where people put fences between shared driveways. Those never turned out good, and they were never resolved in a good way. It would be much better to have a driveway agreement and to proceed in that fashion because if you were to sell your property, or that property next door would sell, you're going to have this problem reoccurring continuously into the future. I understand your frustration and why you would suggest something like that. But it is an issue that, again, you'd need to take up with specifically with the development department of the city at the time you're going to do it. And it would depend on the new owners.
For the benefits are the Armentas, and we don't know that we will ever get to that point. But what we have on page 11 of your staff report, under staff's recommendation, and that is only if the commission, if we end up acting and the commission is supportive of Mr. Raven Camp's request, one of our recommended conditions is that Mr. Raven Camp sit down with you and enter into a shared driveway agreement and shared sanitary sewer maintenance agreement, and that that agreement be executed and recorded before he's allowed to occupy his property.
And then that agreement would move forward into the future.
And so, that agreement would spell out the use, the non-use, the obstruction of the driveway. It would deal with cost sharing and responsibilities for the shared sewer line. It would be signed by both parties. It would be put in the register of deeds office so that 10, 15 years from now, if there's a sale of the property, then one of the problems that we run into is that even though you think you'd be able to see it from the street, even us looking at the pictures, we weren't absolutely sure it was a shared. pictures, we weren't absolutely sure it was a shared driveway and nobody driving by is going to know that you have a shared sewer line or even if you look at the houses. So one of the reasons we encourage those is that that then puts people on notice and in some ways it actually makes property easier to sell because those things are spelled out and not uncertain.
I appreciate that.
I appreciate it. The only, hold on, I'm sorry, uh, another question. The, according to him, there's three parking lots in front of the house. And for wide, uh, well, he got two, three over there, three. Does drive, uh, the front yard, I don't suppose to, I think it don't supposed to be for, for a parking, but because if he make a parking lot over there where he got those margin for parking, then everything is going to be only they're going to using only our side, but we cannot use the backside because sometimes it's like right now, you can see a trailer over there and nobody lives over there. And as soon as somebody leaves, it's going to be plugged in.
If this property is returned to single-family, which it will be, at this current state or it will be demolished, they will not use the front yard as a parking lot. It will be a single-family home. I don't know, even as a, even as a six-plex or whatever, could they have used the front parking lot or front yard as a parking lot?
Well, it would have to be surfaced and I, and it's present condition today, I would not call that a surfaced parking area. I mean, if, if Mr. Raven Camp or another owner was willing, provided the driveway didn't exceed a total of 30 feet in width, if I could borrow your, you could, you know, you could go in and widen this approach and make this wider, but as, as I understand it, the way he's showing it on his plan is that these are like parallel spaces where somebody would come in and just park in a parallel manner along here, but there's no doubt that they're coming onto the Armentas' property to access that. And that's again, why we think that the shared driveway agreement is important because they're essentially, there's really no way at present of, of anyone at 622 entering from Ninth Street and not driving on the Armentas' property.
Exactly. And again, we can't make a decision on this because there is no applicant, but we will discuss it a little more here at the commission and you're certainly welcome to listen to that discussion. And I appreciate you being here tonight. And I'm sorry this is taking so long to resolve. I'm sorry it's taking so long to resolve this.
That's fine.
As a neighbor, I'm sure it's frustrating. Is there anyone else from the public? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing.
We just want to clarify one thing for the benefit of the commission and we can have, there can be both views of, of what occurred on December 18th, but, um, in December 18th, we were contacted by Mr. Raven Camp who said he had a pending sale and that he would like to withdraw his application. Staff said, let's not withdraw it. Let's keep it open just in case your sale falls through. And we don't know if the sale is falling through, but it did not occur. So you have a policy adopted by this body that says that the applicant or representative must be present in order for the planning commission to take action on an item. That policy goes on to say that you basically get one free pass of, of not showing up to your hearing. And if you, if it's postponed and you don't show up at the next hearing, then it is deemed to be withdrawn by applicant. The, the purpose of that, um, policy is that if the applicant is not here, it starts to take on the appearance that staff is the applicant because we're doing all the talking and presenting the information. And we don't want to be the applicant and we shouldn't be the applicant and we're not representing the applicant. We're representing the city of Salina and its public processes. And so the reason for that policy that the applicant must be present is for them, one, to answer questions for you, but also the Armentas are good enough to be here and if they have questions they want to ask of the applicant, they should be able to do that. And the applicant can't answer those questions if he's not here. So our recommendation is to not take action on this, but to further postpone it one additional time and either at that time, the applicant comes and tries to make his case, we report to you that the property is sold and report to you that the application has been withdrawn. So if the application is withdrawn between now and February 5th, we will inform you in advance so that you don't need to appear and come on the 5th. But if it's not withdrawn, then our recommendation is to postpone this one more time to February 5th to see what happens with the pending transaction to allow Mr. Raven Camp to appear and make his case. And if he does not appear at that meeting, then we can treat the application as being withdrawn for lack of interest.
Thank you. And commissioners, obviously I respect Mr. Raven Camp also and we, I don't want to get into discussion here about whether or not what he's doing is adequate or wrong or right or what have you, but we've had the discussion numerous times about density on lots in these, in these kinds of locations. And I think we need to consider that and we need to continue that discussion because I'm all for density and mixed use and for having higher density on, in neighborhood lots, but it has to be functional, it has to work correctly, and it has to enhance livability for everyone involved. So there are elements of this particular plan that conflict with that kind of theory. So I don't want this to derail the idea that we would be considering more density and more units on properties in the downtown area, but things like parking in the front yards of houses and single-family streets and things like that and using other people's driveways to access them. And those are, those are not what I think is smart planning in any way. Um, so we need to wait and see if Mr. Raven Camp intends to proceed with an intent to rezone.
So at this point, uh, as per page 11 of your report, our recommendation would be option three, to have a motion to further postpone consideration of this application to February 5th. And we will keep you posted along the way. And I think we've got a phone number for you so we can keep you posted along the way as well.
I appreciate that.
At what point does this house actually go into some kind of process for demolition? If it's on the list currently?
We'll have Dustin read the resolution of the city commission into the record here.
So that process is actually already begun and there was a resolution that was, was adopted in November by the city commission. And the resolution reads as this, "The owner is directed to repair or remove the structures to make the premises safe and secure." Quote, "The work." So that's when we refer to the work, we're talking about repairing and removing the structures. "The work shall be commenced by January 11th, 2019 and shall be diligently prosecuted so as to allow for substantial completion of all work no later than April 1st, 2019. For purposes of this resolution, the owner shall be deemed to have commenced the work only if the owner, owner has one, caused application to be made to the building official for and obtaining the required permits for the work, or two, commence the physical work on the premises after providing the building official a satisfactory evidence that no permits are required for the proposed work under applicable law. If the owner fails to commence the work or to diligently prosecute the work until the work is substantially completed, all within the time stated, the governing body will cause the stack, the structures to be repaired or raised and removed." So.
And what was the timeframe? I threw all of that, didn't get the timeframe.
So they were to commence on January 11th, 2019 and to have all of their permits in place and proceeding by April 1st, 2019. And what has happened is with this application, this has been stayed where we're just kind of holding on, waiting to see how this particular process evolves and what will end up happening. But there is still an expectation that this property either be completely repaired or that the structures be removed.
But the process is in hold because of this application?
Yes.
And being, and this application being postponed again continues that hold?
Uh, not necessarily. April 1st is still the deadline. But what is being on hold is us getting after them about either submitting permits to get it repaired or getting it removed. Cause it was, work was to commence on January 11th and we are past January 11th. So that is the portion that, that we are currently staying or holding.
And it's the most extreme response, but it has happened in the past where a property could be a dwelling, it could be a commercial dwelling, is on the dangerous structures list. The applicant is given a deadline to either effect repairs or to demolish the property themselves. If they fail to do that, then the city will hire a contractor, demolish the property, restore it back to a clean condition, and then the cost of that will be assessed essentially as a lien on the property. And that's something that's a last resort and something the city tries to avoid, but it has happened before. And so these agreements that, that Dustin referred to are, um, our attempt to work with the owner to affect what the owner desires to do with the property.
Thank you. Commissioners, do I have a motion to postpone this?
I, I have a couple of questions.
Sure, go ahead. Mr. Bappa?
No, go ahead.
Uh, the yellow lines on the, um, overhead, what are those?
Those yellow on that, those are slightly offset property lines, but the yellow lines represent the boundaries of the parcels that are we're discussing. So this parcel here surrounded by those yellow lines, that is the north half of this lot that's owned by Mr. Raven Camp. This is the south half of that lot that is owned by the Armentas.
So, so the yellow line between the two properties is not necessarily the property line?
It's representative of the property line.
It is an aerial photo. There are certain distortions involved in aerial photos. You can't, it's, it's not of survey quality. So while that yellow line passes through the edge of that garage, that is probably not accurate. That's the approximate location of that property line, but it, it shows how this area between the houses lays out.
And referencing this, I presume the applicant's drawing?
This is the applicant's representation of.
It looks like he is assuming he has a 50-foot lot.
He does have a 50-foot lot.
Which then would, shows that it abuts exactly next to the neighbor's property to the south.
Well, both, both, the lot is platted, is 100 feet wide and Mr. Raven Camp owns the north 50 of that 100-foot lot and the Armentas own the south 50 of that 100-foot lot. We do not have an actual field survey, so we can't tell you exactly, based on his representation of this drawing, the property line is roughly along the very north edge of the Armentas' garage.
Uh, sorry, that's one question. Exactly, that's what I was telling my wife this morning when we was looking the picture, that my garage, our garage is not exactly in the line where, where he's pointing it.
Yeah, that line is not an exact representation of your property line.
Oh, okay.
It's done from the air, so in real estate, we don't use those photos.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, because they're skewed. If you were to go out and get a survey, the line would be correct, but this is just overlaid from an aerial view of the property.
Yeah, because.
It's cookie cutter done and it's not accurate.
Okay, yeah, because I was concerned about that because.
You're right.
It didn't look like that my garage is exactly in the line and it's not, it's like.
I'm sure if you got a survey, you'd probably find out differently.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome, you're welcome.
Well, doesn't the property have to be surveyed to get a title?
No, we don't require property surveys in Salina for title process. Any other questions? Mr. Olson?
Yeah, so, Mr. Andrews, when you were talking about that the first meeting that we had, the property owner was not here, it was postponed to today, he's not here today. At this point, it could be terminated. Is that correct? But we have the option to postpone it to another time since he didn't show up?
We don't, we don't view what he happened, what happened on December 18th is not showing up. We view what happened in December 18th was him requesting that the owner postponed to January 15th to allow to see if the property transaction would take place. He contacted us. We will call that, in our view, an excused absence because he contacted us. In our view today, because the property hasn't sold, he's still the owner, he's still the applicant, he had an obligation to attend today. So we view his absence here as unexcused. And so essentially you get one absence where nobody knows that you're not coming. And then you, you are completely within your rights based on what has occurred. If you want to make a motion to deny the application and treat it as withdrawn, you can do that. That is within your purview, but our view is that he had a reason for continuing the hearing on the 18th to the 15th to see if the pending transaction would take place. Since that did not take place, we don't see any reason for him as the owner not to be here today to make his case. But if you make a motion and vote to deny this application, um, he was notified he had an opportunity to be here and he did not appear. He did not withdraw his application, he just didn't appear. But our view was that there were reasons for continuing it on the 18th. We can't see a reason for him not to appear today and make his case. And so it is a discretionary item for you. That is simply our view. So if you want to say he's had his one absence, um, and this is his second and he's not showing interest in the application, then you are within your rights to consider it to be withdrawn for lack of interest by the applicant.
Thank you. Any other questions? No, a motion?
Well, uh, does everybody feel we should deny or postpone?
Well, I am going to agree with the city and staff and their, their suggestion that it be postponed so that he has the opportunity to remedy this.
I think, I imagine there would be an additional fee if we, if we don't postpone it.
Well, we'd have to start all over again.
So I, it seems to me we could just let it go one more time. I am not inclined to.
Well, then I'll make the motion and that we postpone the public hearing until the.
The 5th of February.
5th of February.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to postpone this application until. Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to postpone this application until our February 5th meeting. All those in favor, vote aye, please.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Yes.
One opposed. Motion carries. So is that six to one? Six to one.
Okay.
And that would bring us to administrative items. So our administrative item tonight is the presentation of our 2018 annual report. Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
He'll get one more chance to appear on the 5th of February. So the city commission has, as part of their, um, policy relating to volunteer boards and commissions, they ask each of the city's advisory boards and commissions to prepare and submit a report of their activities and accomplishments for 2018. Um, they're interested both in the number of meetings, the activity level. They're interested in who's on the boards and for, um, you know, what are the boards fully occupied and have full membership or is there a need for additional participation? They're also interested in attendance of members, um, to make sure that members who have been appointed are actively participating. So, um, what we have given you is just some highlights on comprehensive plan implementation, continuing education activities, which mostly focuses on study sessions that we have held. And then we try to give you a picture of how active we've been in terms of hearing applications and cases and how, um, complex or not complex those are. So as we look at, um, some of the things, a, a zoning text amendment where we're adding a single use to a zoning district or something is, um, a lot different than a text amendment where we're looking at an entire set of new floodplain regulations or we're looking at a complex issue like digital signs and billboards. So some of the text amendments that we worked on last year required multiple meetings and multiple hearings. And so we've tried to reflect that. And then we've also tried to summarize, um, that there were three amendments to the comprehensive plan, the future land use map that you discussed and considered. One was at the corner of Iron and Ohio for an expanded commercial land use area there in support of that project. One was over a fully equipment site on North Broadway, which was shown as future commercial and that was changed to future employment area or industrial. And then we had a mismatch between existing zoning, commercial zoning and, and future land use on Pacific Avenue east of Santa Fe. So you dealt with those matters. And then on the commercial side of things, um, probably the two biggest projects that you looked at was the rezoning on South Ninth for the former Pumpkin Patch property. And then, um, the commercial project at the corner of Iron and Ohio is if you drive by, you can see it taking shape. And then, um, work has commenced at the corner of Crawford and Lewis for the new Mokas Cafe at that location. And so you were involved in the review of, of plans for each of those properties. And then, um, we had, which has not started yet, the, uh, memory care facility that you reviewed and approved by resident 600 on East Elm. You approved plans for the Lee loft apartments and we have, um, are preparing to issue a building permit to begin those renovations. And even though it's not likely that it's actually going to occur at that location, you did due diligent work on looking at the police shooting range site on Yo's Drive. And it does not look like, um, that's going to end up being the, the site where that occurs. And then, um, during the course of the year, we had one new residential subdivision plat, but that was a scaled down version of Illinois Hills Estates, number two, and that had 29 lots. So we've also provided, um, member information. And so just a couple of things that we would call attention to is that, um, Mr. Lenkowitz and Mr. Stories' terms expire at the end of August this year. Those are the only two that change. And then we have, um, when we try to lay out our 2019 goals, that's usually a combination of what goals we have internally from a department and what we receive from the city manager's office plus incorporating, um, goals and desires that the commission has, um, placed or discussed with us. And so, um, we think that there may be some follow-up on the corridor plan for Broadway Boulevard. And that has not presently been adopted as any part of the comprehensive plan, but that is a possibility. Um, we're going to try to look at our home occupation regulations and our temporary use regulations this year and, and discuss those with you. Do further, we've got a lot of input, things we need to pull together on our zero escaping plant list. One of our top priorities is getting additional information and options about accessory dwelling units. And, um, an internal goal is the FCC and the state legislature continue to, um, tweak things with, um, the regulations for cellular service and small cell cellular service. And so we try to keep abreast of that. But our, our 2019 goals list is we try to combine things that we've heard from you along with our internal goals. So, um, it's an opportunity for you to correct any misinformation we may have put in the report, um, to add any additional or modified goals that you see fit. But if you think that this, um, report is a fair representation of what you as a board did last year, then, um, at the conclusion would just be to have a motion to submit this to the city commission on your behalf.
Thank you, Mr. Andrew. And these other pages are exhibits?
Yeah, the exhibit A is blank. We need to, we did not, well, we did, we provided a summary and then we, our new exhibit that we haven't, um, done consistently in the past, we just provided an exhibit D, which compares the last three years, just so you can see as a board, um, the particular volume of different types of cases. And it's, it's sometimes not really explicable. Sometimes we have a whole bunch of, um, group daycare homes that open up or something like that. But 2016, we had nine conditional use permits and 2017, we only had one.
I, that's kind of the point I wanted to comment on here and ask you maybe a question because I think exhibit D is probably one of the most interesting parts of this, uh, this report. For those of us that have been here since 2016 or prior, I think I've been here since 2014. So if you look at the numbers, I think a lot of the things that we talked about wanting to see happen back in 2014 earlier have actually been occurring. Um, planned development districts have gone up, planned commercial districts have gone up, zoning text amendments have gone down, zoning map amendments have gone up, commercial plots have gone up, comprehensive plan amendments have gone down. Some of the things that, you know, I, we saw problems with and issues with and too much of, um, have actually diminished as well as the overall caseload. So do you think, Mr. Andrews, staff, that some of that is in response to the process?
Some of that is, um, in particular, the year 2016, we, um, worked pretty hard at, um, put more emphasis on trying to get some of the things done that related to the comprehensive plan and spent more time and energy on that. That kind of reflects with the miscellaneous cases there. But for those of you who were on the commission and recall, um, that one of the bigger issues that we had in 2016 under the miscellaneous category was the street closure for Fourth Street for Kansas Wesley and by their new stadium. And so, um, that, there's, um, no real prediction for us about when some entity might want to close a street or change the name of a street or something like that. And so, um, I think you're correct that a reduction in some of those things, um, the number of residential subdivision plats, um, it was, has been dropping since 2016. And I think, um, what we have seen in Salina is we have kind of, we call it a plating boom or mini booms where there's lots of plats and then the next several years, those lots and those plats are absorbed by the market and then we don't see new plats. And so, um, we're not anticipating many new, um, residential subdivision plats because we will, we've approved a number of them and we'll be absorbing those lots over the next couple of years.
Well, I feel like we've done a lot over these years. We've done a lot of administrative work that has encouraged a lot of what we're seeing now. You know, we did a lot of behind the scene work in terms of, uh, trying to align zoning, trying to align some of our issues that we had and in the comprehensive plan. And I think personally that those things are coming to fruition and that some of the complaints that we had heard earlier about the process being too complicated or involving too many steps has been diminished. So I hope that continues. And of course I credit our staff with 90% of that for bringing us the information and asking the commission to act on such matters to simplify things.
One thing, if you recall, that occurred in last year that not so frequently in the past is that there were two occasions where you had joint steady sessions with the city commission at the same time on same subjects. And of course, that has been a goal of the planning commission for a while to be able to have at least one joint steady session with the commission. So you're at the same room having dialogue on, on the same subject. So we have continued that as a goal and it may be on neighborhood centers. It may be on a different topic. Um, but we would like to try to continue to work towards having at least one joint steady session with the city commission.
I totally encourage that. And I think any of those topics would be good. Density is another issue, you know, that I, I think that we need to further that discussion. Transportation, obviously. Anything else? Any other comments on the reports?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Under first page, continuing education activities, I'd like to see it read, held city sessions on zero escaping, zero escape plant list and wildlife friendly plants.
I would expect you to say that, Mr. Baffa?
So held city sessions on zero escaping, the zero escaping plant list and wildlife friendly plants.
Yes. And there is reference to that, uh, I believe in the future, um, in the long range goals. On the page four, uh, somewhere in there talks about.
Review the city's recommended zero escaping plant list.
And, and wildlife friendly plants. I'd like to insert that in there too. And I'd like to also schedule the next study session with that city planner from K-State that, uh, I gave reference to.
The person with the extension office?
Yeah, well, no, the planning, plant, planning, uh. I think it is landscape architecture in the planning department of K-State.
They're in the regional community planning department, landscape architecture is under that.
Yeah.
Umbrella. But if, so you would like to extend, extend an invitation to him to.
Her.
Her?
Yeah, but it doesn't have to be in here. It's just, I'm saying the next time we study it, that we'd like to hear from her.
To get outside assistance.
And so do we need a recommendation, a motion to approve?
Well, we just essentially a motion that to forward this on your behalf to the city commission or submitted on your behalf.
So moved?
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to submit this report to the city commission for their review. All those in favor, vote aye, please.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Did we have a second for that?
Yes. Uh, Joan was, you were second, weren't you?
Yeah.
Yes. Commissioner Jackson was second on that. Any other business?
I have some other business, just a report. Um, we had a new mayor sworn in last night. But one of the items on the agenda that occurred before the changing of the guard on the mayor was that, um, in going back and reviewing ordinances and, um, reviewing those with the city attorney, going back in the case of the heritage commission to the seventies and the Board of Zoning Appeals to the sixties, that even though as long as I can recall that we have sought volunteers from this commission to serve on the Board of Zoning Appeals and serve on the Heritage Commission. The step we were missing was getting those volunteers, getting them presented to the clerk's office and the mayor and having the mayor actually make those appointments instead of the commission. So last night, Mr. Freiburger was appointed by the mayor to the Board of Zoning Appeals and to.
Since I've been doing that for five years.
And Mr. Baffa was appointed by the mayor to the Heritage Commission. And so that ratifies what you've been doing and we'll, we'll be more cognizant of that in the future. So what we'll do is we will solicit volunteers, then we will furnish those names to the mayor. And then what we are trying to do is avoid the duplication that sometimes there's, it's enough just for the, getting the spots filled on the board. And so, um, what that means is we'll solicit volunteers. We'll take the next step will be to submit those to the clerk's office, to the mayor and have the mayor make those actual appointments. But we will still continue to start with you to see who's interested in serving because it doesn't make any sense and hadn't made any sense to have the mayor just pick someone and appoint it and then they're not being able to attend meetings on a Thursday or something along those lines. But the good news is that a resolution was passed and Mr. Baffa is officially, officially on the Heritage Commission. And Mr. Freiburger is officially, officially on.
Thank you for serving as that liaison for us. I guess I can get an extra free year now.
Your reward for that is that there's a Board of Zoning Appeals meeting this Thursday.
Yes, I know, I know.
And we'll be looking at that board's annual report. And then the Heritage Commission will be meeting on the last Wednesday of January and they'll be looking at their annual report. And Mr. Baffa's invited to attend.
For educational purposes, because we see those. For educational purposes, because we see those annual reports. I mean, I'm going to see the Heritage Commission report, obviously. But I think for everybody else's sake, could we see their annual reports?
Surely.
I think that's important, because I speak on your behalf at the zoning board all the time. And a lot of times what I'm saying is not the same thing other people are saying, because I'm saying it from our perspective, which is that of planners and looking forward. So I'm often arguing a point that I think everyone here would agree with, but that isn't often the same feeling on that commission, because they're coming from different, different thoughts.
And I, we go back and look at that historically, that I think it was 1968 that, when the Board of Zoning Appeals was created and it was specifically set out that at least one member of the board would be a planning commission member, and the same thing with the Heritage Commission, because there is an overlap between what the planning commissioners' role and responsibility is and what those other boards are doing. So it was important to the city commission to have that perspective brought to those boards. So that there's, so that at least there's an opportunity for the Board of Zoning Appeals to know what the planning commission's priorities are, and the Heritage Commission can know what the planning commission's been thinking about, so.
And it works well.
But we were going to tell you that we had no item scheduled for February 5th, but now we do have a single item. We do have, what we will do is if in the meantime, the property sells and that application is withdrawn, we will communicate that to you. We'll communicate to the Armentas, and we will...
We're done.
Cancel the meeting, so.
Well, we don't need light.
So I think the show's been canceled.
It has. And before we leave, I would like to invite you all to Thursday evening at AdAstra. 7 o'clock is a public discourse. I happen to be moderating this and hosting this, but it is on the subject of public transportation in Salina and in the region. So there will be a variety of people there representing different organizations. And as many of you know, I am actively using public transportation this entire year. So, and discovering that. So we'll be talking about this and transit-based development and layering these things within the community. So 7 o'clock on Thursday at AdAstra. Would you like to buy it?
No, God, no.
Anything else?
We will, I've, I've made a note here to myself. We actually have a whole, which we refer to, Mr. Stack and I were referring to just the other day, but we have a set of brochures and route maps for the transit system. And I've made a note here to bring an F so that we can distribute them to all the planning commissioners at your next meeting.
Perfect. And the one thing I heard from OCCK staff, you'll recall, those of you that were on the planning commission, when we looked at a review of the bicycle routes, and we overlaid them with a map and with the OCCK route, and we talked about lifts and such, they would like to see that overlay, but I no longer, of course, have that information.
Okay, we'll, we'll go back and look at what we put together there. We do recall that one of the discussion points there is that they basically said, if it's not too crowded, they tolerate bicycles. But one of the things they didn't do with this particular fleet of buses is they don't have bike racks or they don't have places. If you're riding a bike and you want to mount your bike to the bus and, and ride to the next stop and dismount your bike, they don't have a place to do that, so you essentially have to put your bike on the bus.
Right. But since then, they have added staff that are looking at that particularly as a next step of advancement there. But in order to do that, they'd appreciate our input, having already looked at those things, rather than try to reinvent it at this moment.
We'll, we'll go back to the various maps that we provided you to help put together the bike route map and furnish those to you.
Thank you very much. Perfect. Anything else? Well, I got to catch my bus.
Can we take you home?
I would appreciate that, yes. I'm all about ride shares.
So as far as I recall, the bus does stop right in front of the building.
I am getting very adept at those routes. So I, but I always appreciate a ride.
We saw, we saw an accident last night at Iron and 8th Street, which involved a OCCK bus and another vehicle, but it didn't appear that anybody had been injured, and it didn't appear that you were on that bus.
I was not on that bus. I was in bed.
Life with your own hands on.
I was in bed by then. Do we need a motion for adjournment?
Motion, major.
It's been moved and seconded to adjourn. Thank you, everyone.
Wally and Joan.
If not before February 5th, I'll see you on a street horse.